Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble.
Present.
Counselor Burley.
Present.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Counselor McLean.
Present.
Counselor Desai senses regrets. Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Counselor Columbus. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Body. Counselor O'Leary. Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Milne.
Present.
Counselor Soever. Counselor Boarding Yawson senses regrets. Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
All members here with the exception of Counselors Desai and Boarding Yaw.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move next to the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Ania Shinabik, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani and the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and the Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Item five, is there any declaration of interest pecuniary or otherwise? Being none, I'll simply say again that if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item six A, adoption of minutes. First is County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated September the eighth, twenty twenty-two, looking for a mover to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Woodbury and seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Any discussion? And I'll call the question, all those in favor, are there any opposed? That is Carrie, thank you very much. We have no closed meeting matters and we do have a public health report and item eight A, it's the Public Health Grey Brew Sport of Health Minutes dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, could I have a mover please to put the item on the floor? Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Burley. We do have Dr. Era present, so Dr. Era, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, good morning, Mr. Warden, good morning, counsel. And the highlights from the minutes is mainly related to the COVID update and the data continue to be reassuring. The data I'm going to reference is from the past two weeks. Provincially, the picture is positive, there is decreasing case around ten percent in deaths, around fourteen percent in outbreak, number of outbreaks by twenty-four percent. Hospitalization has also been decreasing. But when you zoom in from the bigger picture, the number of health units, I would say half the health units have have been experiencing decrease in these numbers and the other half has been increasing, so there is still activity definitely related to COVID. But the situation in the province and in Grey Brew specifically, we are in the health units that the numbers are decreasing, is reassuring. So at this point, there is no need to change course from the recommendation that we have, we continue to monitor. It's worth mentioning, Mr. Warden, the first case of central influenza, seasonal influenza arrived and we have been getting ready for the season and we work with the ministry to ensure that there will be vaccine distributed throughout the community. Those are the main points, Mr. Warden, open to questions as always.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Era, counsel, are there any questions? Seeing none, I will thank you, Dr. Era, for your time. I know that flu season is on, the vaccine for this year's flu season will be available when?
It should be available within weeks from now. Those dates are always moving, but we usually prepare for the vaccine to start in October, late October, November, but we know from the data that came from the southern hemisphere from Australia, they have their winter during our summer, so usually the trajectory of the curve is very similar to them. They had it earlier, four to six weeks earlier, and it was more severe, so we are prepared to draw the vaccine earlier than usual in early October, but those dates require communication with the ministry and information that comes at last minute sometimes.
Thank you, sir. All right, time to call, I know Counselor Patterson does not have an additional report today, I usually ask her. I call the question, all those in favor, is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie, thank you very much and thank you, Dr. Era, again.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item nine now, and we do have a bylaw, five-one-four-five-two-two, it's a bylaw to adopt amendment number eleven to County of Grey Official Plan. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Gamble. And I'm going to turn things over to you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, Warden, members of County Council and anybody who may be tuning in this morning or in attendance. We did have a significant amount of discussion on proposed official plan amendment number eleven at the September eighth committee, the whole meeting. Since that date, staff have also received comments from a number of parties who submitted comments after that September eighth meeting. Staff thought it prudent to provide counsel with a summary of the comments that have received since September eighth, just so you can make a truly informed decision in this regard, as well as to give a bit of clarification and response to some of the comments received. So I apologize for the last minute nature of this update, counsel was emailed a four-page document this morning, which included a summary of all the comments received. In the efforts of saving some time, I won't read every single one of those comments, but please be aware to the commenters, the council does have a copy of the summary and I'll try to go through some of those comments here now briefly. Essentially, we received three different types of comments. The first comments, the first type of comments we received for those that were simply asking clarification questions or asking for an update on official plan amendment number eleven. In this regard, we received comments from one of the school boards, Town of Blue Mountain staff, the Meti Nation of Ontario, Cana Care Limited on behalf of Infrastructure Ontario One Hundred One, as well as the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And each of those bodies was requesting some clarification, for example, Town of Blue Mountains staff had some questions about whether or not official plan amendment number eleven would impact their short-term accommodations policies and licensing. Staff responded back to town staff that we don't believe it will and we're still deferring to municipalities for detailed policies on those matters. There was a brief suggestion from Cana Care on some of the CP rail trail policies and then the ministry simply wanted an update on the status of official plan amendment number eleven. The second type of comments we heard were with respect to the county's proposed changes to our on-farm diversified use policies, sometimes you'll hear that referred to as the acronym OFDUs. And we received a number of comments, including some as latest this morning. We received comments from Michael Hawkins, Bill and Susan Patton, Dan Wickens, Dawn Hargrave, Chris Strut, Dawn Swindell, Patricia Ellingwood on behalf of the Ontario Forge Council, Nancy and Gordon Strut, Joyce Hall, Grant Caswell, Jeanette Perry and Robert Walker. And those were all the comments received up until seven thirty AM this morning, so if other people have submitted comments since then, I might have missed them. In general, there was some concern about the on-farm diversified use policies. There was questions raised about whether or not it was consistent with the provincial policy statement. There was questions raised about how the farm community and farm organizations had been engaged on the official plan amendment number eleven and whether or not it was prudent to do so as part of this broader official plan amendment. Excuse me, there was questions and concerns raised about the protection of agricultural lands, there was questions and concerns about the sizes of on-farm diversified uses that could be permitted on smaller properties. There was concerns about the proliferation of on-farm industries, particularly in the southeast of the county, and whether or not this official plan amendment would allow for that further proliferation. There were some comments to suggest that some of these uses would be better suited in industrial park areas. There were some comments about the environmental impacts of these uses as well as noise impacts and impacts on infrastructure such as our roads. And there were some comments about these uses having a deleterious impact on the county achieving some of our climate change goals in that regard. Just for counsel's benefit, this matter was something we hadn't heard about prior to the September eighth meeting in terms of concerns with respect to the on-farm diversified use policies, and as such, it wasn't addressed in any comprehensive fashion in the staff report. I did just want to help counsel understand exactly what's being proposed here and why it's being proposed. The on-farm diversified use policies are proposed to now allow for on-farm businesses on smaller properties in both the agricultural and special agricultural designations. Previously, in the agricultural designation, they were limited to properties twenty hectares in size or larger. Now that size is proposed to be reduced to ten hectares. And previously, in the special agricultural designation, they were allowed on properties that had ten hectares of agriculturally productive land or larger. That size is now being proposed at a ten hectares flat. There were some thresholds previously for allowing for uses such as bed and breakfasts and home rural occupations on some of those smaller farm lots. The county did have a request from Mr. Solomon Martin, who provided some planning justification from his planning consultant Christine Loft to look at changes to the policies to allow for them on smaller lots. Some of the justification they put forward was that the smaller lots are the ones that are in greatest risk of becoming large estate residential lots, and if farmers were allowed to buy these lots and have a secondary source of income, it would help better ensure that the lands are actually being farmed. In order to achieve these means, county staff also have proposed policies to suggest that any on-farm diversified use in the special agricultural or agricultural designations can only be permitted if the landowner has a farm business registration number. So this is really attempting to ensure that these policies are benefiting farmers and that the lots aren't being just bought by business owners that have no intent of farming. There's also changes being proposed in official plan amendment number eleven to flag the fact that sometimes when people are proposing these on-farm diversified uses, they will require noise studies or servicing studies or traffic studies to get at some of the impacts we heard from members of the public. Certainly, some of the concerns we heard from the public were around the on-farm industry, but I would flag for counsel's benefit that these policies speak to all our on-farm diversified uses, not just those on-farm industrial shops that are fairly common in parts of the southeast of the county in that regard. Certainly, in some of the public comments, there was concerns that they don't feel that the proposals, that the changes proposed speak to them and they feel that as farmers, they may have deleterious impact on some farmers. County staff would note that, in our opinion, the policies don't take away rights from farmers, they allow for broader rights in this regard to have an on-farm diversified use, but in no way does it compel a farmer to do so. So if someone's buying land, they could choose to put in one of these uses to diversify their income, but they're not required to do so. I would note that certainly if counsel has any questions, be happy to take any in that regard, but that's sort of the high level summary. And then finally, the third main comment we received since September eighth was the comments we received on September twenty-first from the municipality of West Gray and their lawyer, Mr. Leo Longo in this regard. I'm just going to read a brief summary of those comments. West Gray supports the majority of official plan amendment number eleven and acknowledges the dedicated work that's been done on the growth management strategy. West Gray remains open and ready to advance discussions regarding growth in Gray County as evidenced by continuing discussions with Hanover and Gray Highlands. West Gray staff have participated in sessions led by Gray County most recently in June twenty twenty-two. Following that workshop, Hanover staff acknowledged that West Gray's preference would be to explore beneficial servicing agreements and that all parties agreed to move to a subsequent workshop, which the county offered to facilitate. West Gray is optimistic that exploring that model is a viable route to ensure growth in Gray County can be achieved. Inserting two additional future secondary plan areas in West Gray is outside of the state purpose of OPA eleven, lacks the required transparency and notice under the Planning Act and stymies public engagement and input into this separate and distinct planning issue. West Gray is opposed to the two future secondary plan areas being identified in official plan amendment number eleven in the municipality of West Gray. West Gray and Town of Hanover should be allowed to continue their ongoing discussions exploring potential servicing options that may consider the town's potential future needs and address West Gray's concerns. If a county official plan amendment is determined to be required and is justified, a discreet and separate planning process should be initiated and pursued. County council should revisit motion CW one thirty-two at their September twenty-second meeting, which is, of course, the meeting today, and please delete items seven and forty-seven before adopting official plan amendment number eleven, or alternatively, make no decision respecting these policies at this time to allow further dialogue between West Gray, Hanover, county staff, and with informed input from members of the public and stakeholders. Such a non-decision could be revisited and considered by county council at any time in the future when deemed appropriate. So that's a summary of the comments received from West Gray and their solicitor in that regard. With respect to just a very brief staff response, county staff want to make it clear that we don't want to do anything that's going to negatively impact discussions between any of our member municipalities on achieving their future growth targets. You know, we want to assist where we can, but we certainly don't want to do anything that would cause a roadblock in that regard. I will say that following the comments raised by representatives from West Gray at the September eighth committee of the whole meeting, county staff, including our CIO and deputy CIO and myself, met with staff from West Gray to try to better understand the concerns that were being raised and address anything that we could. Out of this meeting, county staff developed a frequently asked questions document, which was specific to the future secondary plan areas, which has since been shared with members of council, and we thank West Gray staff for their suggestion to develop that. Certainly, county staff can appreciate West Gray's comments and their legal advice. Staff would note that we have made attempts to engage all parties and members of the public on official plan amendment number eleven, both all of our nine member municipalities and all of our neighboring municipalities outside of Gray County's boundaries, agencies and the public. We definitely heard comments from some landowners in these future secondary plan areas. We heard comments from some municipalities, and we would note, as per the previous summary and the summary today, some of those comments were in favor of the future secondary plan area and some of them were in opposition. With respect to what's before counsel today, certainly county staff would note that counsel has the ability to render a decision on all of official plan amendment number eleven today, should they wish. Counsel could choose to defer the matter in its entirety and render no decision on official plan amendment number eleven, or counsel could choose to pass portions of official plan amendment number eleven, for example, not including the secondary plan area, future secondary plan areas. As a request from staff, staff would simply request if the matter is deferred in its entirety, or if only portions of official plan amendment number eleven are passed, staff would simply request some direction going forward on what counsel would like to see. So if counsel wants to see more consultation on this matter, please let us know. If counsel wants to see certain matters such as the future secondary plan areas come forward as a separate official plan amendment, please let us know. As always, counsel or staff work at the direction of counsel and we're happy to implement counsel vision, but we might just need some direction there. With respect to official plan amendment number eleven, staff would note that outside of these future secondary plan areas and some of the concerns that we've heard on the on-farm diversified uses, there are a number of municipalities and developers awaiting a decision on official plan amendment number eleven because it impacts their ability to pass updates to their own official plans and/or move forward with their private development projects. And then finally, I would just remind counsel for everybody's benefit that there are appeal rights on official plan amendment number eleven. And should counsel make a decision, whether today or in the future, if there is anyone that's unhappy with counsel's decision that has participated in the process, they could certainly pursue an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to the warden and I'm certainly here to answer any questions if there are any.
Well, thank you very much for that very good report, Scott, and I have to say, I love how the word deleterious just rolls off your tongue. It's a word I learned in law school. Okay, counsel, questions, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council and staff. I do have an amendment that I'd like to put forward at this time. And also, I have comments for it, and my amendment at this time is that amendment number eleven to County of Gray Official Plan, remove references regarding future secondary plan areas within the municipality of West Gray from seven and forty-seven of the proposed official plan amendment eleven. And that the topic of future secondary plan areas within the municipality of West Gray be dealt with at a future county council meeting and only after consultation with and between the local tier municipal members and following the appropriate opportunities for the public stakeholder and local tier municipal member input.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to confirm, the amendment is that essentially the summary of the amendment would be that the proposed bylaw be amended to remove reference to future secondary plan areas within municipality of West Gray and that this topic be dealt with at a future meeting of county council, specific to items seven and forty-seven.
Yes, that is in a nutshell, I do have the written document, if you'd like to see that, I could pass it over and I think that would provide more clarity. Okay, thank you.
So it's a move by Counsel Robinson, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Gamble. Discussion, and I'll start with you, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I first want to thank staff very much for acknowledging the correspondence that was prepared and submitted by CIO Laura Johnson, that's West Gray, CIO dated September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, as well as the correspondence submitted from Air and Verlis, and this was with Leo Longo, who is a lawyer that on behalf of West Gray Council and West Gray submitted correspondence with regard to section seven and forty-seven of the proposed OPA eleven. So with that, I also would like to identify that West Gray has always been supportive of growth and has met with our neighboring municipalities, Gray Highlands, with regard to Chapman's and Hanover, with regard to the particular matter that we're discussing today, to discuss options that provide positive resolutions for both parties. We are fully aware that West Gray is an essential partner in making growth happen in Gray County, and quite frankly, we are also, we also know that the important role that West Gray plays in the future growth opportunities. We sincerely appreciate the efforts and the work of our professional staff in bringing this item before counsel. We also respect and appreciate the true housekeeping amendments in OPA eleven and do not wish to contest those housekeeping matters at this time, there may be future discussion at this meeting, but my focus is on sections seven and forty-seven. In fact, as proof of our commitment to the process, West Gray sought independent legal advice. That advice, which has been provided to counsel, recommended removal of sections or items seven and forty-seven. That removal will also result in transparent consideration and an appropriate planning process for the public. Additionally, it is very clear in the staff report that OPA eleven is intended for housekeeping and the overlay again is not in the staff report, sorry, alternatively, it is very clear that in the staff report that OPA eleven is intended for housekeeping and the overlay, again, as noted in the staff report, is not directly tied to the growth management strategy. Given that, I respectfully request the removal of sections or items seven and forty-seven and the associated schedule of the proposed official plan amendment number eleven, and I would seek county council, my colleagues' support in this amendment, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson, anyone else speak on the amendment? Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, County Council. OPA eleven is designating two areas for future growth. It is good planning, planning for the next twenty-five years. The county's growth management study has shown growth will occur in the Hanover area. Hanover's numerous studies and reviews have shown growth will occur over the next planning horizon of ten to twenty-five years. That growth includes commercial, industrial and residential, which also includes employment growth. Hanover has, with the assistance of a team of consultants, completed a comprehensive review, an official plan amendment, consultation meetings have been initiated with our municipal neighbors, both at the county level and the local level. Consultations have been held with a public meeting and I can assure you- And I can assure you, West Gray was invited to all of these meetings. The provincial policy states that growth should occur where there is appropriate levels of service, and that's just not water and sewer. It includes schools, hospitals, recreation facilities to support that growth. This is a designation so that when West Gray and Hanover discuss growth options. The future secondary areas will be reviewed for possible growth. It is just good planning to designate future secondary areas. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Patterson. Any other speakers? Councillor Desai. Councillor Silver, my apologies.
Yes, I'm sure I'll report that to councillor Desai when I see him. Okay, thank you. So it's certainly, you know, growth is very real in in Gray County, and we've experienced it in the Blue Mountains more than anybody else. So far, and it's going to be spreading to other areas and it's going to excel only accelerate with what we've seen the last few years. So, you know, I recognize the importance of secondary growth areas. But, you know, this sets a very dangerous precedent for putting an amendment through like this before the lower tiers have had a chance to agree among themselves on how this is going to actually work. We've had growth in our area and then certainly, once these subdivisions and things are developed, people want sidewalks, then they want their sidewalks plowed. Then all of a sudden, you have to have a works yard to then provide for the equipment to be stored somewhere. I can't see it coming from Durham all the way over there and in an economic manner. And, you know, also sewer and water, you know, municipalities collect D Cs for sewer and water charges. But in this case, those areas being in West Gray, West Gray would collect the D Cs. But the reasonable way of servicing it is from Hanover. So, you know, although people say, well, these are just secondary plan areas, it's not taking land away from West Gray, putting it in Hanover and for all practical purposes. I mean, the only way to service these lands in a in an efficient and I might say environmentally sensitive manner is from Hanover. I mean, to have equipment traveling back and forth from West Gray to the edge of Hanover all the time to service subdivisions there is, you know, that's a huge amount of greenhouse gas as well. So, you know, this is really a step to redrawing the boundaries, whether we we say it is or isn't. So I think this does deserve its own discussion and its own amendment and you know, I can see it affecting other areas as well. Owen Sound is kind of limited in the land that it has to grow. And I could see it in the future reaching out to our friends in Georgian Bluffs and Meaford for and, you know, I would think that we're setting a very dangerous precedent here by approving this in this manner because you know, are we going to do this all the time is just say, oh, we're just doing a secondary plan amendment? When realistically, in terms of a practical way of servicing these areas. It is an adjustment of boundaries that would be required to do it in an efficient way. So, you know, I think this does deserve its own discussion. I think there's a lot of good things in O P A eleven, staff have done a lot of good work, so I think we should approve the rest. But this discussion really deserves its own resolution and it should be resolved among the lower tiers. And then come back to county council. Once the lower tiers have an agreement, because it's going to affect both of those low lower tiers financially. I mean, when a development goes in there and West Gray is holding the development charges and the servicing has to come from Hanover, those kind of details need to be worked out before. You know, we we go ahead and say this is where development should occur. Because if those things are still in flux, the development will be stymied anyway. So, because it won't be able to be serviced. So I think we should, you know, not set a precedent here, which may impact far more than West Gray. I know the resolution talks about just West Gray in this secondary plan amendment, but looking down the road. It could be next time it could be Owen Sound and Georgian Bluffs, Owen Sound in Meaford. We're fortunate, we have Meaford and Gray Highlands. They don't have any settlement areas nearby, although we have a large development right on our boundary with Meaford as well. So, in, you know. We've got a, you know, I think it is a lower tier issue that should be resolved at the lower tier before it comes to county council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors, whoever. Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Mr. Warden, am I able to speak to the the entirety of this or only to the removal of section seven and forty seven?
Right now, we are speaking to seven and forty seven because it's the subject of an amendment. However, however, that said, it's the removal of seven and forty seven within the context of the larger bylaw that's being proposed. So I suppose there is some allowance to speak beyond it as well, but I would just say limited.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Warden. So I'm I'm wondering, you know, based on the information that we just received late this morning. It certainly, you know, causes me some pause. And I'm wondering if we should be, you know, deferring the entire entire matter for more more consultation. The impact of the on-farm diversified is real. You know, when people talk about the industrialization of the countryside, that is happening. I don't always believe that it is secondary to the the farm use. It may officially be, but often those farmlands are rented out to someone else that are able to qualify that way. But it's the on-farm diversified, you know, we've certainly seen it, not to the extent that Southgate and Gray Highlands have. But I am hearing concerns from the farming community about these shops that are going up, you know, our road uses. Some of these back roads weren't designed for some of the transport trucks that are having to travel on them. I'm wondering, you know, what consultation has been done with our agricultural advisory committee? And with the O F A and other farm groups in regard in regards to this on-farm diversified. I'd like to hear more from the farming groups in regards to that. So those are my comments. I'm just wondering if this is a time just to defer the the whole matter until further information be brought back. Thank you.
So I'm so I'm going to try to keep us on on track. We are discussing a specific amendment that's been proposed. That might be a further amendment, depending on what happens with this one. So I'm going to say, I I see that Scott has his hand up and he can comment about the consultation with agriculture, but I really just want to try to limit that discussion because I do think it's getting beyond the crux of the main motion that's before us right now, which is with respect to seven and forty seven. Scott, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and and thank you, councillor Mackey, for your comments and questions. With respect to the consultation with the the farm community. We did have discussions with our county's agricultural advisory committee with on official plan amendment number eleven. Most of those discussions were geared towards preserving farm buildings and preserving old bank barns. And so some of the changes for the on-farm diversified uses are geared towards trying to look at the adaptive reuse of those old farm buildings and bank barns for on-farm diversified uses. But there are certainly some matters in official plan amendment number eleven that weren't explicitly discussed with the agricultural advisory committee. Beyond that, we didn't hold any targeted industry or stakeholder sessions on official plan amendment. Official plan amendment number eleven with any other farm or industry organizations. We had our public meeting and we were accepting comments from members of the public. But we didn't do any targeted outreach with Christian farmers or or O F A or anything of that nature.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So based on Scott's response, I I certainly believe because we there wasn't any targeted consultations with those farming groups that and the concerns around the on-farm diversified, I think that's justification that we defer this in itself. If we deferred the entire matter, then the removal of seven and forty seven is a non-issue.
Let me just take a second with the clerk because I think what you're proposing is a further amendment beyond the amendment that's on the floor being discussed right now. Thank you, everyone, for your indulgence. I'll come to you, Deputy Warden, in just a quick second. Councillor Mackey, what I'm hearing is that a motion to defer the entire thing takes precedent over everything else. So I would be prepared, if you want to make that motion, to entertain your motion to defer the entire matter. And we'll vote on that. Depending on what happens there, we'll go back to councillor Robinson's motion. And depending on what happens there, we'll then go back to what's before us in the agenda. Does that make sense to everyone? Does anyone have any questions about that?
Warden, Warden Hicks, I do have.
Okay, so I I thank you. I'm first going to go to Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council. There's parts of the this O P L eleven, I think, is some good things. One is secondary units and moving forward with that type of thing, as I spoke to last. I was prepared to move after we had this motion on the floor and prepared to move a motion to defer eighteen ninety ninety one and ninety two to have further discussion, as mentioned by Scott and and others around here, which is focused on the agricultural part and getting more diet, more input. So I just throw that out there. I don't know. Certainly, deferring the whole O P eleven is a possibility. Right now, the motion on the floor is dealing with seven and forty, seven and forty seven. And I'm prepared to move a motion with eighteen ninety ninety one, ninety two, but keep the rest going. I just pulled that out here because there is some good parts. There's been a lot of work put into that. I don't hear, we're hearing the two two points that are being communicated here with regards to concern. I mean, in most cases, if there's concern, maybe a pause in those, but you move forward with the other. I just throw that out for conversation, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I I I won't entertain that motion now because it doesn't trump councillor Robinson's motion. However, councillors Mackey's councillor Mackey's motion would trump it if he brought that motion. Okay, so councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I I maybe you need to get your eyes checked if you thought councillor Silver and I looked similar. Or maybe he's got a tan. I don't know. I don't. I haven't seen him today. But I I wanted to bring that up a similar point as Deputy Warden McQueen did with regards to councillor Mackey's motion. That if if the only issue he has is with the on-farm diversified, then would it not be better to simply defer items eighteen, there's a list of items that speak to simply the on-farm diversified. Eighteen ninety ninety one and ninety two. So would it not be more prudent to just afford those?
So my answer is yes, it might be, but it does not trump councillor Robinson's motion, which is properly on the floor right now. So I could entertain something along those lines, depending on what happens with councillor Robinson's motion first. And I still don't have a motion from councillor Mackey, but councillor Burley, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. At this stage in our life, I was assuming that councillor Mackey had put the most support. If he did, I was going to second it. And I agree a hundred percent that O P eleven has some great points. But I'm really cautious and concerned the way it's going down the present per setting. That's why I think that this time in our life, our terms of council are getting awful close to the end. I really feel that need to step back, take deep breath and defer the whole thing to a new council.
Sorry, Scott, I wonder if you might speak to, there's a number of comments about precedent. Is this a precedent?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm not totally sure how to answer that. So there is there is precedent for a future secondary plan area in the county official plan. And and that was first established actually in official plan amendment number eighty, which was a review of the county's official plan. And and some of the members that are more senior on council here may remember that that future secondary plan wasn't in the adopted version that county council adopted back in March of two thousand nine. That future secondary plan was established as a result of negotiations with with primarily town Hanover and West Gray. After Hanover appealed the county's decision on official plan amendment number eighty that was approved by the province. And and so moving forward here, should council pass the future secondary plan areas? It would be carried carrying forward with what was done through official plan amendment number eighty. I will remind council that out of official plan amendment number eighty came official plan amendment number one twenty two, which was a separate and distinct process to look at further refining those future secondary, that future secondary plan area. And it involved consultation with landowners and and with both municipalities. And so if the future secondary plan areas were to pass through official plan amendment number eleven, whether it be now or at a later date. There would still need to be future discussions and future official plan amendment, a future official plan amendments before anyone could ever get to either servicing and or applying for building permits on on those lands. So it is really just the start of discussions in that regard, should there be support for moving forward. Should it be deferred or should council direct staff to undertake a separate process, then of course, staff are willing to follow council's direction.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just further to Scott's comments that he indicated earlier. Scott noted that there are some municipalities, I think, are waiting for O P eleven to be approved so that we can move forward with approval of their official plan, official plan updates. So that's the only thing that we want to make council aware that there are some things that are waiting, I guess, for O P eleven. So deferring that to a point in time that is, say, for example, the next council would delay some of those those matters as well. There is also some legal nuances and I'm I'm I know Michael's on the line, but he's also attending a conference and and in speaking with Michael before this meeting. If if we council was looking to defer certain parts. The the caution there is that there's definitely some legal nuances that come into play. And his recommendation would be to defer this to at least then, say, the next council meeting, so that we can have those discussions in person when Michael's here. So that's another option that I just wanted to raise to council if 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 council is wanting to look for a deferral of any part. A, we need some further direction in terms of what is going to be required of staff to move forward with, whether it's further consultation, etc. But our staff recommendation at this stage would be to defer until at least the next meeting. So then we can have those legal discussions with Michael in person.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just through you to well, actually, no, I'm very clear on it. So I would move, I'm going to make a motion that we, to move that we defer the entire bylaw. Five one four five dash twenty-two. So I'll make that, move that or motion to defer until such a time that we can have our legal consultation and whether it be the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I will need a seconder for that motion to put it on the floor. Moved seconded by Counselor Burley. Okay, so now we're going to have discussion, if any, I'll come to you, Deputy Warden, on the motion that's on the floor now, which is to defer the entire thing. I'm gathering to the next meeting of council. Which is October thirteenth. Okay, Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council again. And I can support the deferral till the next meeting on the whole. But I do look at sections, and I guess my question to you through to Randy or Scott is, it comes back on the thirteenth for a legal opinion, but I still feel that there are sections in here that should go through and sections that maybe should be deferred. And that goes back to the same comments that Counselor Mackey had raised with regards to the on-farm diversity uses. With regards to, if you remember back when we were doing our official plan review with regards to green and gray, there was a lot of concerns with rural lands and, and corridors and different things. And we did have opportunity to have a workshop or an open house at the Gray Egg Services in Markdale, and I think was very well received with mapping and that type of thing. So I think, moving forward, I think that in a permanent pause after the thirteen, needs to happen to get that feedback. And I think it was really beneficial to have that opportunity. Second to that, there is an OP amendment to our official plan in Gray County or Gray Highlands, also on a lot of the different sizes. So there's, there's two things happening at the same time. So it probably would be really good to have that sort of work together in the sense and deferring that and, and giving that opportunity to the farm groups and, and up maybe up through the agriculture advisor here at Gray County. And just, just to go through that part, because I look at other parts of the OP eleven and Section Ten and Section Eleven. Section Ten talks about tiny homes. Section Eleven talks about additional residential units, which we know we have a real issue with affordable housing and the ability for homes, not only through the province, but through Gray County and affordable homes. And those two sections, I think, are very beneficial in the sense of moving forward with opportunities to create some of those housing opportunities for young families or, or seniors or whoever needs a smaller home or can't afford. And we see with real estate on what has happened there. So, you know, and we talked a bit about this at the last county council meeting with regards to those, as they call them, the additional R units or A R U's. And so again, that's just one part of, I think, in a sense of the bigger picture, those, those are very beneficial moving forward. I know we do have secondary units are allowed, but this sort of gives more focus and, and even at our affordable housing task force meeting on Monday, we did have further discussion around the idea of tiny homes being a possibility of being two of those units that could be on a lot. So I think that's a good thing. We need to keep, so I support the pause for today. But I think certainly coming back in that time, I think there are things that need to, as an example, need to keep going forward. So thank you for that time.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I would just say, if, if that is truly your position, then what you would do is you would vote against this motion, and then you would bring a second motion with respect to the items that you think should continue and the items that you feel should be delayed. Go ahead.
I'm following. I think, I think part of, correct me if I'm wrong, part of this deferral is also to seek legal on certain parts. So I, I'm okay with referring it and going through, but certainly on the thirteenth, you know, I will be back saying, I'd like to see these things move forward just because of, I think there's some good things. And there could be, there's other things, a lot of great things in this as well. So I'm just going to leave it at that, Mr. Warden, then.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey.
I would support, you know, deferring it to the next council meeting to allow, based on Randy's conversations, allowing him to get legal opinion for all county council in regards to removing certain item or sections of the OPA eleven and what implications, because, you know, Counselor McQueen is absolutely right, and council decide that there are pieces of this that we all, I think, fully support. But based on the information we were provided with this morning, it causes some pause around some other areas that you know, further consultation needs to happen. I certainly can't support the on-farm diversified, knowing that there wasn't, you know, a full and hearty discussion with our, with our farming group. So and, you know, the, the lawyer from Eric or Ayrden Burless, you know, the some of the concerns that have been, been mentioned there brings new information to, to Section Seven and Forty-seven. So I think it's important to get that feedback from, from our solicitor, and I would certainly support moving it over to that next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? My brain has gone fuzzy on me. Counselor Mill, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It, it seems rather ironic that some members of this table forget the discussion we had around creating the Farm Advisory Group. I remember at the time saying, well, we've got the Federation of Agriculture, we've got the Christian Farmers, the Farm Union, we've got lots of groups that we can consult with. But I remember some member saying, well, no, we need a consolidated group, an advisory committee to consult with on egg issues. Scott and his, or yeah, Scott and his staff have done that. They've consulted with the egg advisory group. But apparently that's not enough now. We need to go to the actual groups, which seems ironic to me, but nonetheless, I can tell this group that from Southgate's perspective, at least, the diversified on-farm uses has been a boon to our economy down in Southgate. Taxes generally will triple on those properties that have those diversified farm use shops on them. The ag land on those farms is far more productive nowadays than it ever was in the past. And I think it maybe is because some people are trying to attribute the advantages of the on-farm uses to a particular demographic. And that's not fair because the diversified farm uses are available to everyone, not just one demographic. Although it would appear maybe just one demographic. So I, I can't support deferring this for that reason alone. But if we need to go to the next county meeting to allow some people more discussion or more thought on this, I, I won't vote against that, but I, I do understand some people's frustration that there has been long and considered consultation on the entirety of OPAA or OPA eleven. And yet, at the last minute, now there's objection. It seems unfortunate that we have to drag this on. But nonetheless, if that's what the group needs to do, that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Deputy Warden.
So just point of clarity in the sense of the Gray County Agriculture Advisory Committee, the largest farm organizational group that represents the majority of Ontario farmers is OFA, which is technically not a member of the OFA. It came to this council to include members from all, but the OFA was not included in those terms of reference. So which is sort of unfortunate, but whether there's representatives representing other commodity groups that are on there that are OFA members, I can't speak to that. But I know that the terms of reference does not specifically spell out an OFA member, or I can't remember of the other ones as well, but it does not speak to the OFA members, which is the largest farm group in Ontario. It's of the three. On the other that, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Have I exhausted everyone? So it's perhaps time to, Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's, it's time for the vote. I'm requesting a record vote.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just note that Counselor Desai joined the meeting probably about twenty, thirty minutes ago, so he is with us today. Counselor Mackey.
In favor?
Counselor Mackey is in favor. Counselor Gamble.
Can I have that read again?
Yes, so this, the motion that's on the floor is a motion to defer the entire proposed bylaw regarding OP eleven to the meeting of October thirteenth.
In favor.
Counselor Gamble is in favor. Counselor Burley. Counselor Burley is in favor. Counselor Carlton.
In favor.
Counselor Carlton is in favor. Counselor McQueen. Counselor McQueen is in favor. Counselor Desai.
Opposed.
Counselor Desai is opposed. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks.
In favor.
Warden Hicks is in favor. Counselor Columbus. Counselor Columbus is in favor. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Keveney is in favor. Counselor Body. Counselor Body is in favor. Counselor O'Leary. Counselor O'Leary is opposed. Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Woodbury is in favor. Counselor Millen. Pardon?
In favor.
Counselor Millen is in favor. Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Soever is in favor. Counselor Boarding Young is absent. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Robinson is in favor. Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Hutchinson is in favor. The motion to defer carries seventy-one to thirteen.
Great, thank you very much. So what do we do with the, with Counselor Robinson's motion, I guess? Okay, so just to be clear, Counselor Robinson, it's being deferred. So your motion as well is being deferred, even though it's still technically there. So when we come back, we will deal with whether your motion will proceed or whether we're doing something else.
Yes, thank you for that clarity. I have that full understanding. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Moving on. Item number ten, good news and celebrations. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Yesterday, we had some very exciting news and event happen. We had a groundbreaking ceremony on the corner of Tenth Street and Seventh Avenue, which is Gray County Four, County Road Four and County Road Ten. A vacant site that has been vacant for over ten years will now be under construction for a seven-story building that will ha- house one hundred and thirteen apartments with commercial on the ground floor and underground parking. So we're very excited to see this site come to life again. It was a former Queen's Hotel, and a lot of Hanover natives will remember that hotel, myself included, and the Deputy Warden. And Warden Hicks and myself were able to have a light lunch along with everyone else sitting on that corner. And that will be our treasured memory of that site. It's an eighteen million dollar investment into our community. And we're pleased to see an increase in attainable apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. My brain is not playing well for me to Counselor Hutchinson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Just want to do a shout out to Rob Edwards and his family over in West Gray. They have, they have a long heritage of supporting and organizing the Terry Fox Run. I did run into Rob yesterday, or well, yesterday or the day before over in Durham. And very pleased to announce that once again, they, they raised eight thousand dollars towards that charity. So well done. I think it deserves a shout out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Millen. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and congratulations to Hannah, but I personally have no idea what it's like inside the Queen's Hotel, or was. Moving on, yesterday in, in Southgate, in particular Dundalk at the arena, we had the Southgate Teen Years Health Fair, which was well-attended by a great number of people. There was all kinds of vendors there and services with booths around the outside of the perimeter of the arena for people to consult. It was Jennifer and Anne Marie were both there giving presentations on seminars upstairs. And I thank them for doing that, and I thank and congratulate all the organizers. So it was really a great event, and they're hoping to do it again biannually, I think. Annually, it's a big job, but they're hoping to do it again in two years. So we look forward to that. Thank you.
Yes, it was a very good event. Counselor Soever, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So there, I just like to tell everyone, there's still tickets left for the Oktoberfest, which will be taking place on Saturday, the twenty-fourth in the Blue Mountains Community Center. There's going to be homemade sauerkraut and some sausages from Sikorsky's in London. So some very interesting food, and there's a dance afterwards. There's also a tree planting on the twenty-fourth. And on a more somber note, we'd like to acknowledge the passing of Bruce Osborne, former deputy fire chief of the Thornbury Fire Department. He's been a very important member of our community for many years, and so that you'll see that our flags are still flying at half-mast to mark his passing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to bring a few notes of events that have happened and are coming up in Gray Highlands. There's a successful Feebersham Fair, Truck Tractor Pole Parade and Dance last, I guess, Friday night, Saturday and Sunday. The Rockland Fair also had their ambassador program and along with a community dinner and dance on Saturday as well. And we'll be having the Rockland Fair this, this weekend on Saturday, and the, the highlight of that will be the man's apple pie baking, which will be auctioned off at the CAF Show into the evening of, of Saturday night. We had a very well-attended check presentation for this year's Ram Rodeo that was seventy-three dollars short of thirty-five thousand, which is in the two years that we've raised over seventy thousand dollars with the Ram Rodeo toward the new hospital, and it is planned for May of twenty twenty-three for the next third Ram Rodeo, which hopefully will be another successful event, which the money generator goes toward the Markdale Hospital Foundation. And it was mentioned yesterday that they hope to have it completed by the end of twenty twenty-three. There will be probably a six-month transition from the old hospital to the new hospital with regards to what happens there, but certainly on track as far as the progression of that hospital. And I'm looking forward to the, it is the grand opening and certainly county council and the Warden of the day, and the county council will be invited to that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't see, oh, Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. I just wanted to speak to our Miford Dragons event, which is coming up on November the third, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. This is an annual economic driver for businesses within our municipality. The call is out right now for contestants. So if anyone is planning to must operate within the municipality of Miford, but it can be a new business or an extension of an existing business. And people have until the seventh of October to get in touch with the Chamber of Commerce. The phone number there is five one nine five three eight one six four zero. And again, I stress, if anyone would like to be a contestant, it's an absolutely amazing opportunity to get support with your business plan and also to raise awareness for your new business. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Keveney. I'm looking around once again. And I see no further hand. So thank you for that. We'll move on now. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Going to suggest that we take a fifteen-minute break, so that'll bring us back at twenty, twenty-five past the hour. Anyone opposed? That is carried. I'm going to suggest that we take a fifteen-minute break, so that'll bring us back at twenty, twenty-five past the hour. See, none. I would just say if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. We have no business arising from the minutes, and we have no delegations. Item number five, determination of items requiring discussion. We're now dealing with the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, moved by councillor Columbus, seconded by councillor Burley. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We're now dealing with item seven A, which is the Regional Electronic Vehicle Network Partnership Study Results and Next Steps. I need a mover to put the item on the floor, moved by councillor Carlton. I see you waving your hand around. You're probably just chasing a fly, but and seconded by councillor Keveney.
Great. Thank you for your time this morning, council. This is very much a good news story, as the title of the report suggests. This is both an update on a piece of work that's been ongoing for about eighteen months at this point, as well as recommendations around next steps. So, so back in the spring of twenty twenty-one, council directed staff to enter into a regional partnership to undertake a study around the most strategic and coordinated approach to electric vehicle charging infrastructure across the area, so public electric vehicle charging infrastructure. I'm here today to tell you the results of that study. We were successful in a funding application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, which paid for fifty percent of this work, and we, as the County of Gray, contributed just over three thousand dollars to the initial study. The partnership, as you can see on this illustration and also the maps within the report, is quite broad. One of the things, if you haven't heard the term yet, that you likely will soon in discussions of electric vehicles, is the idea of range anxiety. People have a lot of concern that they're going to run out of juice, and that when they do run out of juice, unlike the gas station, they're used to hopefully being able to find relatively close by. There may not be an electric vehicle charging station. And so in an effort to open up this region, so the region covered by ourselves in the County of Gray, the County of Wellington, the County of Duffrin, the counties of Perth and Huron, as well as the cities of Stratford and St. Mary's in the County of Perth and the County of Bruce, we wanted to basically understand where would electric vehicle charging infrastructure need to be installed? That an electric vehicle driver could feel comfortable that across this entire region, they would be able to fuel up if they needed. So basically, they could travel across this region without concern. Specifically, in undertaking this work, there were a number of pieces. So there was a survey conducted both of current electric vehicle drivers in the area and proximate to the area, so the kind of folks who maybe live in the GTA or even down in the US, but who might be vacationing in Gray County with an electric vehicle. And then also a survey of just over a thousand residents of the study area. And then also a survey of just over a thousand residents of the study area, whether they own an electric vehicle or not, in an effort to understand from them how this kind of charging infrastructure might support them. So we conducted these two surveys. We also assessed current existing and planned infrastructure to enable us to do a gap analysis. Based on that, we also worked collectively as a partnership to identify sighting criteria, which I'll speak to later in the presentation. So where should we be putting these things? And the ultimate outcome of the project was a regional EV charging network plan. So a strategy that identified how many stations are needed, where they should be located, and what level of charging would be most appropriate. In terms of how this work was conducted, we at Gray County were lucky to benefit from the County of Duffrin taking on the project management of the project and sort of working with that group of partners that was identified, along with the Nuclear Innovation Institute, who acted in an advisory capacity. And we contracted an organization called the Community Energy Association to actually undertake the work. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, but just certainly for me, I had a pretty steep learning curve around electric vehicles, and it can mean many different things. So firstly, there are three types of electric vehicles. The first is a hybrid vehicle. You can't plug this in. So this is just using technology. So you've both got an internal combustion engine and a battery. And when you're braking, or when you don't need to be using the internal combustion engine, it switches over to electric. You won't even know it's happening. You just drive it like you would an internal combustion engine. The second is a plug-in hybrid. So it's a vehicle that still has an internal combustion engine in it. But again, it has the battery and you can plug it in. So here you're able to extend the range by plugging in and it's going to operate in a zero emissions capacity more frequently. The third type of electric vehicle is a fully electric, battery electric vehicle. So this kind of car, there's no internal combustion engine. You're going to save a whole bunch on maintenance because there's a fraction of the moving parts in an internal combustion engine. Brake pads are going to last you three hundred thousand kilometers. And you have to plug it in. It needs to be plugged in to be charged. If it's not plugged in frequently enough, you're going to run out of juice. And in terms of the federal government's mandate, their mandate is that all light duty vehicles, so passengers and even small trucks and SUVs, need to be zero emissions. So effectively, a battery electric vehicle or something similar by 2035. So there's a reasonable chance that the next car you purchase, if you've recently purchased a car, depending how long you hold on to it, it's going to have to be zero emissions. And so we're going to need the infrastructure to support these kind of vehicles. What does that infrastructure look like? Again, not as simple as a standard, single kind of gas pump, where it's one size fits all. There are three different kinds of basic types of chargers. The first is level one charging. And so this is kind of your emergency charge. So this was basically if you're, anybody in their home could run an extension cord out their front door, plug their car into it, charge it up. It's going to take you probably twenty-four, forty-eight, maybe seventy-two hours from an empty battery to fully charged. So this is not a viable solution in most instances, but just to know that you can charge an electric vehicle with a standard plug. Level two charging is the kind of charging that most people would have in their own homes. So this is the kind of outlet you would have on a stove or a clothes dryer. It's a bit more heavy duty. So a two hundred and forty volt charge, it's alternating current, not an electrical engineer, but these are the specifications for this. From an empty battery, it's going to take you eight to twelve hours. So when we talk about level two charging, it's great for at-home charging. You go home after work, you plug in your vehicle, it's ready for you the next day with a full charge. In terms of public charging, level two charging infrastructure is most appropriate somewhere where someone's going to stay. So somewhere where they're going to maybe go, for example, Scandinav Spa and spend the day there, somewhere where they're going to be for a number of hours. That's a level two charger. The fastest kind of charger, which is the focus of the next steps of this report, is called DC fast current charging or level three charging. This requires three-phase power. It's a more serious piece of equipment. But it does allow a battery to be fully empty, to be recharged in sort of forty minutes to an hour and a half. And oftentimes, plugging in for even fifteen to twenty minutes is going to be enough to top up your tank. So when you see the kind of chargers that the provincial government is installing at the enroofs on the four hundred series highways, those are level three fast chargers. So these are more like an enroute stop. You stop, you top up, you keep going. So they're not somewhere we would, something we would install in a destination, but again, rather something to extend the driver's range. So in the study that was undertaken, we first looked at the existing infrastructure. So the map on the left of the screen are those level three fast chargers that existed in early 2021. The colors are the ones, the level, the green are in operation and the yellow are ones where there's privately owned, sorry, my mistake. The green are government-owned stations, so ones that are owned by municipalities, and the yellow are privately owned. And the red are ones that either perhaps have some limited availability. And on the right-hand side of the slide, you see the level two station. So these are those slower chargers. So there is already some coverage across our area, but certainly you can see along the shores of Georgian Bay in Gray County and also Lake Huron over in Bruce, there's some big gaps. So if you were an EV driver and you wanted to go up to Tobemory from Goderit, you would be concerned you might not have enough charge. So we looked at that gap analysis of where there are current, or we looked at where there was currently charging, where there were perhaps gaps. That group of project partners looked at sighting criteria. As I mentioned, for level three fast chargers, it's kind of top-up, but things that we definitely knew we needed were locations that were accessible. So any user would be able to access them, places that perhaps had amenities. So they're going to be able to get a coffee or use a washroom facility and also a dedicated parking stall. From a technical perspective, we also did some basic analysis by engaging the IESO and local utilities around electrical availability. So overall, in terms of coming up to the strategy that we're putting before you today, we documented the existing charging stations, we identified those gaps. We presented that work to, the work was presented to that group of partners, but we did also invite all local municipalities to attend two webinars to hear the results of the study at the staff level and also at the climate change community of practice. We've discussed this item. And so based on all of this, a final network was proposed. So again, this is really about filling those gaps and alleviating range anxiety across the area. So this map shows both the existing stations and also the seventeen proposed new locations across the study area. Three of those locations are within Gray County, in Durham, Flesherton and Thornbury. This is not to say that level three chargers could not, or should not, or will not be installed in other municipalities, but in terms of an initial phase of installation, these were the locations identified that would best alleviate range anxiety and really create a comprehensive network across the study area. This is an example of a similar effort at charging networks out west. So it's really been used as an economic development and tourism driver by saying that we know increasingly, especially in urban areas, there is an uptake of electric vehicles. So if we're hoping to attract tourists who have electric vehicles, being able to market and present a comprehensive network of charging is really to our advantage. And so these are a couple of networks that Community Energy Association has been part of out west. So in terms of next steps, we have this strategy, which has identified locations. And what we're proposing today as staff is to move forward and continue the successful regional partnership. The County of Duffrin this time has offered to step up and take on the project management. And so they're looking for a contribution from all of the partners of nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that collective spending would go towards retaining a facilitator. And so this facilitator is a role that has been played in some of those Western Canadian networks, where basically they would stick handle our competitive procurement process for a private sector, third-party implementation partner. The cost of installing a level three charger ranges between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then to the ongoing operation and maintenance, of course, also has resourcing implications. And so a successful model we've seen is for municipal governments to basically support the identification of where these chargers should go, but then working with a third-party private owner-operator. So we would receive the benefits of being able to market our area as EV-ready. We would receive the environmental benefits of the reduced emissions from electric vehicle usage, but we would not be responsible for the on, well, the installation cost or the ongoing operation of the chargers themselves. And so for the next phase of work, we would work with a facilitator to run a procurement process for this third-party installer. And the facilitator would also help to support any capital funding applications. There is federal dollars available to support charging infrastructure installation. And so this is what we're proposing as a next step, is to continue working in the partnership and really work to have a third-party partner own, operate and install the chargers. Thank you, and very happy to answer questions.
Well, thank you very much, Linda, and this is really exciting. And it's been a while into making, I kept asking questions. Where is this at? Where is this at? It's nice to see this coming to fruition. Counselor questions, Counselor Burley.
Thank you very much for a great report. It's good to see it coming. The question kind of mine, your group, have you, or do you look at the capacity of the grid to be able to service all these things?
Through the chair, Counselor Burley, we did engage IESO and some of the local utilities to talk about the sighting of the chargers and also at a high level, the overall grid capacity. The, the direction we've taken is given the federal mandate and also the increased provincial interest in electric vehicles, that on each site, there would be the need for an electrical analysis. And we understand that these locations are appropriate. And certainly, before anything would be installed, there would be further analysis of the electrical capacity. In terms of the overall grid capacity, that's really the work of the utilities. And we need to move forward to fulfill, I guess, the federal mandate around being electric vehicle-ready and allow other orders of government to manage the grid, which is their responsibility.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey. You're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Linda. I know we're going down the electric vehicle road. I'm just wondering, the comment, the strategy recommends that small and rural municipalities not own the level three fast chargers due to the capital costs and asset management cost burden. So they're recommending us not take that on. Who is taking on that, that risk?
Through the chair, Counselor Mackey. So there are examples of third-party, I guess, private charger operators who have been willing to take on that risk across a network. So trying to think of the name of the one that I most recently crossed paths with. So there's, there's Flow, which is a, it's the charger. So Ivy Network is one example. So the Ivy Network is the, the private partner that the provincial government has worked with. There is a local private sector charger operator, whose name is escaping me, who's worked in Bruce County. But there is a business case to be made for operating a level three charger. I think the question for, 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 for counsel is, in terms of a line of business and in terms of, I guess, the public interest, do we want to be taking on the management of electric vehicle infrastructure, where there is that risk of technology innovation sort of changing more quickly than we're able to adapt?
Well, thanks, thanks for that response, Linda. Do you have any idea how many chargers would be put into these, these sites? I guess I'm trying to in my head, you know, driving to Amo and I think about, you know, going into one of the enroofs and, you know, there was a lineup to get gas. How many chargers would need to be on an enroute if people are having to be there for an hour? I just, I can't fathom the size of that parking area, you know, when I think about the number of people lined up for gas on an enroute.
Through the chair, so much like sometimes I do, but many of us will not have an empty gas tank when we go to the gas station to fill up. The assumption is that in charging an electric vehicle similarly, it would not be that full period of an hour to charge. It would more likely be a fifteen, twenty-minute top-up. But in terms of the number of chargers needed, so the study is recommending as a phase-one rollout, at least two chargers in each location. This is not saying this is all the chargers we will need for the next fifteen to twenty years. This is really about the next five years. So based on the current level of EV usage and the predicted level of EV usage, the, the belief is that having two additional chargers, at least in all seventeen of these new locations across the region, would be adequate.
Just further to Linda's comments and, and through to Counselor Mackey's questions. You know, there's, there's a couple of things that, you know, from a staff perspective, we see, as Linda noted, this is just kind of the initial piece of moving forward with having level three charger or more level three charges throughout the county that supports that regional network. But it does allow for municipalities, if, if we have someone owning and operating and managing those level three charges, allows then further financial resources to be allocated towards things like our corporate fleet and getting ready for EV for corporate fleet, or looking at level two chargers, which I know a number of municipalities are already looking at as part of their communities as well. So, so there's, there's opportunities to look at. Plus, you know, this is just a starting point, I think, in terms of what we're going to see in terms of the need for level three chargers. So this, if this model is successful and works, we can replicate it. If we need to tweak that model after this particular project, then we can look at other options going, going forward.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Gamble.
Yes, Linda, it's exciting world, this EV transfer. But lately, we've been bombarded on the internet with why we shouldn't be jumping wholeheartedly into this. And there's a great number of reasons. But the one that sticks out in my mind is we don't have the battery technology to back this up. Lithium is not a good source to power these things. It's highly toxic. It's, we have no way to get rid of it until they come up with something different in the life of the batteries. Once you start fast charging lithium, the life of it drops very fast. So, you know, probably Randy has more information than I do, but I just don't think we're quite there. And I'm really hesitant to see us jumping quite as hard as we are. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. I think that's a really great comment to raise, that the fast charging does have an impact on the batteries, which reminds me in the earlier question, Counselor Mackey, something that I don't always remember is, unlike internal combustion engines, where every time you fill up, it's a gas station, most of the times, an electric vehicle owner is charging their vehicle. It will be at home with a level two charger because of the exact reason you raised, which is to constantly be doing a fast charge is going to have real impacts on your battery, battery life. And I think, I mean, absolutely, we don't want to rush into this. And I would suggest that this kind of financial investment at, at just under the ten thousand dollar mark and also looking at three chargers in Gray is a relatively kind of moderate approach to rolling out this infrastructure. And again, there are, with the federal mandate, you know, we need to be responsive to what we're being told is going to happen. And I think in terms of battery innovation, there's a great example just across the road from us of a local company that does mining equipment that's battery-operated, where they're saying, you know, we can't have emissions down in mines, we need to have zero emissions there. So they're, you know, We need to have zero emissions there. So, they're, you know, doing heavy-duty equipment that's battery-operated. Certainly, there is work that needs to be done. And, you know, I thank you for those comments, but they are, they're, they're part of the, the thinking that's going into this work, for sure.
You're good. Thank you. Next is Deputy Warden McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you very much for the report. I got a couple of comments, questions. You've, this has been communicated with the lower tiers, because it's a good report that you're bringing forward, and it would be really good to come to our council meetings and show us and the public who watch, because you really break it down into all those different parts, and I think that's great. I just wondered going on what Counselor Gamble is saying with regards to, I think personally myself, I can see where probably every household will move toward electric vehicle. Like, I look at ourselves around the table. We've come here today. Me, it's probably a couple hundred thousand round, two hundred kilometers round trip. So, I have it plugged in. I drive here, turn around, own sound, spend some money, spend some money and own sound and then go home, which would be fine, because that charge would, I think you're getting to the point where it's, what, five, six hundred, seven hundred, but getting more kilometers under that trip. But as Counselor Mackey says, to make a trip for a five or six, eight-hour trip, may be a different thinking. And I think that's maybe where some of that plug-in hybrid comes into play versus your full electric. It depends on what you're going, what your driving needs are, I think. So, I think there's, there maybe have to be some flexibility, I think, with that mandate, just depending on what's there and charging capacity and stuff, because certainly I would agree that charging it at home, when it's cheap at night, you go for your trip, go to work, that makes sense. Like, you can see that happening, right? It's just the, the long haul and stuff like that, or certainly winter time, you know, that is also an issue too, that can can be an issue as well, right? And it's always a question that I've heard is if you're stuck stranded in the middle of winter on a road, do they have the supercharger that comes out and boosts your car and gets you going? And again, and I don't know. I guess that's, those are down the roads, and we can't be, I think we have to be very open-minded on this, and that's what we are all about, right? And so, very positive, I think it'd be great if you could showcase this to our lower tiers, because we're all going through this as well. And I think you've done a lot of research here, and it's, it's going to be, it's going to, we're going to evolve as we move forward as well, right? And trials and tribulations is everything else. It's new technology, right? So, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands. So, perhaps it's time to call the question on the motion before us. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. We're going to be going into closed session. Want to make an indication about who needs to stay and?
Do we have a list of who's staying?
Did I know that? You want to say?
Is that in the motion?
So, the staff that will be remaining in the meeting are Randy, myself, Sarah, Anne-Marie, Geraldine, and Sandra and the communications staff.